Now for you to start your meeting.
All right, we'll stand, just sat with the pledge, if you don't mind standing for the pledge. Okay, first thing I need to know, we got tonight is, Mr. Tolman, to consider zoning change on Wilson Road. Mr. Tolman, get us your piece in a hundred words or less. Choose wisely.
Yeah, I uh, I just wanna get that change back to commercial, it was commercial. And uh, for some reason, they get thrown in with what you guys did upon the terminal property.
Actually, it was never commercial, because the whole town didn't have any zoning at all.
Well, the selectmen had told me that it was when it.
That's why the selectmen have their meetings, we have our meetings. I don't tell the selectmen what to do, and they show us that go run the planning board, so.
Yeah.
But, all kidding aside, the whole town never had any land used only 2006, so we zoned the town, that just ended up being in the I R A five district. We won't render any decisions tonight, I know, I knew you were coming in, I seen the gender, I've talked to you before about it, and same as Fernacle Friends, is somebody from Fernacle Friends here as well? Can I just, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna switch between the two of you, okay, Rick? So, your concern is what, land?
Uh, it's the farm stand that we have up there.
Yep.
And, as you know in the letter, that we've always used that as a commercial building.
Yep.
When we went through the state process, apparently the land didn't belong to the state, and we ended up purchasing the land under the building. So we own the whole thing now, when we tried to lease it back out again.
Who's we is it?
Some issues.
Who's we, who was the friends of the firm?
Fernacle Friends Incorporated.
Is it, okay, is, is, is the corporation owns it?
It's a corporation that uh.
Are you an officer of the corporation?
I'm the president of the corporation.
Alright, okay.
We're members.
So basically, what we did was, we rent, we rented out the store, and with the money that we receive from the rent.
Yeah.
We give it to the guys, I think it's, it's incorporated in the letter that you have.
Alright.
Okay?
So what's the issue up there? It's always running as a farm stand?
It's always been run as, well, it's been either a country store, or a farm stand.
Yes. So what's the issue right now, at hand?
Well, the issue at hand is, when we went to lease it out this time.
Yeah.
We ran into problems that they wouldn't let people do cooking there, they wouldn't let you make anything there, because they said it's zone, it's in the wrong zone.
Right.
But it's always been there, I mean, it's, it's not something that's.
There was never a commercial kitchen, how big, how big is the lot then?
Probably about a half acre, maybe.
Yeah, and it will be a commercial kitchen, in my opinion, well, it was.
Well, see, we had, we had a chance to have a, how this came up was, we had a chance to have a bakery come in, they just wanted to bake their own bread for.
Yeah.
I think it was Crows on the Plum. Okay, so it was a small outfit.
So you're trying to do commercial industrial with that parcel?
What's that?
You trying to make that commercial industrial?
I would say it's commercial, in other words.
You know, separate commercial district, maybe highway business, something like that, would be.
And, yeah, in other words, what we got told was, we can't, they can't make coffee there, they can't make, any, they can't prepare any foods there. Uh, you can't, if you wanna sell something, you have to buy it, in order to sell it. So you can't make it yourself, because it's not zoned that way.
Right.
They can't get a food beverage permit, no. No, it's a crow's law to put a. So, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do, because there's really not much for discussion tonight, there's no decisions are made tonight, and what we do every several years is we'll schedule a public, just a public meeting, not a hearing, public meeting, requesting anybody and everybody in town that has concerns for zoning changes where they feel they're in the wrong zone, or wants to see something changed, or whatever, we'll advertise it for the whole community, and people can come in, and then if you guys are still, still on your ways, then we'll address it at that time, and the board will take it under advisement, and then we'll render whether we're gonna send it to the town meeting, if we don't make the decision, we don't change it, it has to go to town meeting.
So when would this happen, like?
It wouldn't happen till next, next spring, we'll take a year from now.
Really?
Yeah.
Cause I wanna change it to commercial.
Yeah, you want to, commercial industrial.
Right.
Yeah, and there's no more B, by the way, it's commercial industrial now, because the B used to be a D E, suspect watershed area, but since then, fifteen years ago, the town did their own, draw a test on the wells.
Yeah.
And so that doesn't exist, so, actually, commercial industrial B doesn't exist till this commercial industrial. I mean, the zones.
Right, and this Charlie, Carol. Yeah, I mean Charlie's one that, we never had a problem Charlie, with anybody doing business there.
Yeah, that's, that's relevant, like, to right now, because if we don't make the decision, they go in front of the voters, but we'll.
Well, as far as doing the business here goes in front of the building inspector, the building, the license licenses. Yeah, I think it's like, said you can't use it for that, cause it's not.
How far from other commercial is that? Is it the other, that's just right across the street? Where does that commercial end on that, the zoning?
There's not.
Well, that's, that's.
That's the only problem, we're gonna see that fit. It's a standalone by itself.
Right.
For.
There's, there's no way that this could be covered under any existing, business, system would be, have the in, in time, in likes, so, I mean, it was a craft store, mostly it was a farm stand.
Right, but what, what's that, lapse of what, after two years?
Yeah. Yeah.
When's the last time it was, how long ago was it leased out, rented out?
Uh, we leased it to, uh, antique place, where they sold the antiques.
How long ago? Was it more than two years ago?
Oh no, we, it's, it's always been in lease, uh, it was released to Richard Allen, but he was selling cordwood up there for a while. Right. He was cutting cordwood.
How long was he there?
He was selling honey, and several years, maybe three years.
It's still a farm stand, basically.
It's just not, it's not zoned to have a kitchen there.
I don't think you can zone it, spot zone a quarter, a, a, we have some, the criteria for commercial industrial zoning, it's definitely more than a minimum size lot.
The question is, your grandfather, like.
But it's always been, in existence, since.
Yeah, we used to, I mean, we used to make stuff.
We used to make coffee and all that.
We used to make coffee, we used to sell it. We used to make cookies, we used to make.
But the building inspector's interpretation, because I know a little bit about that as well, is that they were selling honey, they were selling farm goods, what, what was originally, apples and so on and so forth?
Yeah, the first.
So, it's hard to go, it's hard to say, well, we're making coffee, we threw, bought the coffee yesterday, saying we're gonna put out sixty gallons of soup, I buy a commercial kitchen tomorrow. If the two don't line up, just because you have a car doesn't mean you, you get a dealership license, I mean, it's, it's like that far of a stretch, so it has to say in kind what was there. Just that it was commercial, doesn't mean it was commercial for anything, you can't go from making, from selling coffee to making widgets, it's not the same. And that's what it is, and I think myself, that parcel itself, is that it's too standalone and too small to make any significant difference for contribution instead of town, to community, not to mention, we don't like spot zoning, and that's what it would be. Because is, is all the land around that parcel up there, owned by the state still?
All the land around it is owned by the Commonwealth.
Yeah, so that's the problem.
The only sad part is, FFI supports.
That part is they don't sell coffee down there anymore, that's the sad part.
No, the sad part is, any of our income goes directly, see where.
We're non-traffic, we're non-traffic.
Yeah. The best thing to do is get it back to the state, and have that lease it to you, because they don't follow our laws anyways.
Well, that goes not to the state, as much as it goes right to.
It goes to the clients.
The clients that are.
They wanted me to give the money, they wanted me to give the building to the state.
I think that's what you guys should do, then the state will circumvent any local bylaw and use it, they can, they can read.
They won't be servicing.
Then they won't service the clients, the difference is, is we give the money, i- i- if the guys that are retired, or they have.
Challenge.
Challenge individuals, they don't have incomes, okay, or what they do get, isn't enough to go to the Red Sox game.
Yeah, no, I believe in what you guys are doing, but we have to look at it as a town, and not where the, where the proceeds are going, because when you change the zoning, it's a serious thing, as far as because if you start, if you make a commercial industrial, well, the description of commercial industrial is a hell of a lot, as far away as you can think of that first coffee plant you're talking about. Regardless of what your source is, it's commercial industrial, and I don't believe there's any category in commercial industrial that would fit on that size lot so small, especially if you set up a commercial kitchen and whatnot.
Can we get a variance right now, so that's our.
We're not doing anything right now, but just gonna schedule a meeting for the whole town to come in, just to talk about other changes they want, and then we'll do a public hearing, to discuss everyone in detail. So there's, there's, there's gonna be a meeting trail to go through.
They can't kill to the zoning. They can't deal with Z B A.
Another year.
If they want you.
A year.
Right, we don't do zone changes, I mean, on, at, at the special meeting, at town meeting, anyone's the only one doing it, the annual town meetings.
This is not the we can go through the Z B A for, right?
I have no idea, do you have a letter, denying yourselves from, from doing what you wanna do?
Yeah, from the building aspect.
Well, that's who you take to the Z B A, if you have a denial letter, that's the only, you can take, that's all we get to Z B A, is for the denial letter.
Yeah.
You can't go there first, you have to deny something.
And they can go through.
Alright, alright, when you give us a deny, a refusal, then we can go to the Z B A.
Well, you already have it.
You don't.
Cause we already have it, yeah.
Yeah, but you have it, so you should go to the Z B A.
No, we don't do it.
Once you up to your garage up there, and put it up there at your place.
Yeah.
So do they take into consideration what the property's been used for?
Nope, was it, was it ever permitted? It was never a commercial permit, I promise.
On the eight acres here, we're talking about?
Are you talking about your, yeah.
It's, it's, it's two separate lots, one is zoned residential, R five, and one is zoned sand, well, it's in public records as sand quarry, valued at more money than the residential.
So you bring up the reassessors, it's still I R A five. Assessors, how the assessors assess your land, is obviously up to you or anybody to defend themselves, say, hey, why am I in a separate tax, well, he taxed me.
Why is it valued more, that, that, four acres more than the, yeah?
Right, that'd be, that's an assessors question, it has nothing to do with the zoning itself. It's just a process.
For commercial.
What's that?
I've been using it commercially all these years.
It doesn't matter the rent, because there was, there was, at the time, you're not, you didn't use, it wasn't, it doesn't go back far enough. But we had site plan review prior.
The government owned it, that's why.
Right, well, I'm saying, but we had site plan review prior to zoning, and there was never even a permit for commercial use on, on the site plan review category, so basically, it was like, a lot of people think that, I'm not, don't, it's wrong, I'm not accusing, I'm saying, if you don't have a permit, you save a few bucks here, save a few bucks there, but when it comes to, you want to work in your favor. Like, prove it, if you never had a permit, and never had a license on any location, anybody, grandfathering is your last resort, and even that doesn't usually, doesn't always fly.
Cause that was long before zoning, you guys even thought of zoning.
What's that?
Graves is zoned across the street from this, as commercial industrial.
Yeah, we don't look at, who owns it, we look at the tracks of land, and so, does anybody about you, or is it all state that buss you directly?
It's an ideal location for commercial.
Is it, who buss you red, property, is it private property owners, or is the state actually about you as well?
Karen Tucker owns on the top path.
How about going up two oh two?
Fish and Game owns that. On the two oh two side.
Cause even that, we'd have to check with council, because it's still considered spot zoning. Which would be considered a favoritism, so on and so forth, but it's, you're trying to do continuous tracks, when you do A type of zoning. But that'll come up to public hearing, so, for now, we know you, you guys are interested, but we don't, we can't render decisions tonight, it goes to a public, it goes to a town meeting final vote. Or we'll go through the process, and we'll start with a advertising for interested parties, basically, come one, come all, and then we pick from that meeting, do a public hearing, and we discuss them all at that time, as far as say, well, what, what's the board gonna recommend to the selectmen to put on a warrant?
So in a year?
It won't be told, we have, we, Tommy's tomorrow night, should be next, and will tell me whether that is next year.
So why are we here tonight?
I have no idea. You need to request it. Right?
Yeah.
What were you told, what were you told to come here tonight for? I mean, other than just to bring it up to us? Cause we don't change zoning, the town changes zones.
I've never been to a town meeting in my life.
Follow.
We got a letter from the town, telling that to be a meeting tonight.
Because you want to change zoning, that's why, right, yeah, this is the first step. This is the first step, so now we have your intent on here, we need to follow procedure protocols, and it's public here, come, public hearings, we know what you want to do, so you're already, okay, duly noted.
And how do we follow up with this now, we just?
You have to come to every single meeting, twice a month, right? But you'll, you can just check, like, get on the list, it's on.
Yeah, so Lori mentioned that the next step would be to notify the abutters for the two requested interested parties, and then they would have a.
She's missing a step that we.
They would have a public hearing.
Yeah, but we'll do, we'll do, see, we have a year to work on, we'll ask the rest of the town, and the same token, gives the board's members time to say, hey, what about this file, we need to fix down here, we, we, we kinda wait, do every so many years.
Yeah, we got the only abutters, Karen.
Then we change the maps. Okay. Alright.
And that's all conservation land.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna build around there.
That'll be a town council, be a town council call, as far as considered spot zoning, how many acres of that?
Eight.
What is eight total?
So if it was, if it's not commercial, then it's a house lot.
Right.
But they got a five acre.
You're fronting, you're fronting on both roads.
Yeah, and it's eight acres.
Right.
So you need five acres to build a house.
Yeah, or at best.
I can't even put two houses on it, the way it is.
But at best, two houses with a.
And that's not good for our houses, I mean, it's, we have no commercial property around this town anyway, it'd be nice to have a little store there, or a gas station, or some kind of.
Recycling center, or anything, that's a zone, right? Okay, we good?
We're all set.
We'll let you know, yeah. We're gonna move it.
Okay, we're leaving.
Alright, we'll see you at every meeting, if you miss one, we're gonna start all over.
Oh yeah, let's do this again.
What a life you're gonna have.
Is there a way that we can get a variance to this until after the town?
You, you need, the only you can do, we can't advise and do anything, if you have a denial of the building inspector, your next clause is actually to go to the Z B A. That's the only ones, because we, that's, once the building inspector denies you, the only person you can appeal it to is the zoning board of appeals, that's it, has nothing to do with this board. So, next step, alright. Yeah, no problem, guys.
Good luck.
Sorry, I'm a little rough around the edges, I know it too, so don't worry about it. Article number three, Daniel Gartner, Stephen Blay, general questions?
Yes. Yes, I. I wanna come back, and I let you know, the, you and the board, that I do have an agreement, purchase seventy-two car lane. That was, that was the estate of Russell Romney, and then Matt Leclerc is, you know Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Matt's the executor of the estate, so we had, we had come to an agreement, because the last meeting I was here, you said that I needed, you know.
Well, yeah, we said we got, we got the traffic study, but at least it would definitely help your cause, so to speak.
Yes, the reason I'm here is to see what the board would like, as, as far as me moving forward with the development up there.
We don't, please, we don't give narratives, as far as we look, we review what you, what you submit.
Ah, I understand.
Myself, I'm just one member of the board, I'll go right back to my last words. I would have you request a peer review, do a set, a traffic study.
Okay.
Cause that's the traffic study, you can work back with the traffic, so it's gonna tell you what those rules will support.
Sure.
Support, I don't, can't really comment on anything else, because we don't have to have a full submitted plans in front of us to look at, so do we?
Hey Kurt, is this on Baker Lane?
Steve, yeah, Stephen's what, yeah, Baker, end of Baker.
And they, have they come up with that conclusion on what they're gonna do with the water?
This is, nothing's happened, anything, it's just, right now, they're in the preliminary, so.
No, I'm just curious, cause my mother's house was down there, and when Miles King built out there, they flooded that whole area.
Yeah.
And, of course, conservation wouldn't let them dig the brook out, Miles King wanted to dig the brook deeper, and then they ran into problems with state. Uh, because they said the pipe at the bottom of the road wasn't big enough to handle the water.
Yeah, and they had to cross the road.
Yeah, exactly, just.
Do we have?
There's no paperwork for this discussion.
So, I, I think the way it should work, it's, you're gonna have to, did you, because you just, you haven't actually submitted anything.
No, I'm just here for general discussion, what the board would be looking for.
So.
You mentioned the through road.
You should probably at least submit the closest plane you think you have, to what you want, and everything's manipulated, can be manipulated, but I would, I'd suggest you to submit something to us.
Sure.
Through the office, whatever is tied to it, and we'll check, we'll get it off to a peer, we use Whitman and Bingham for peer review.
Okay.
And, um, we'll have them look at it, and give us an estimate, how much to, because I think they'll sub it out as well, but they can look for us.
Sure.
For a, for a traffic study.
Okay.
And your initial, maybe initial onset of check calc, and stuff like that, because that's really gonna be.
Cause those are the basic plans, we have checks, and then kind of look at and go.
We have something to reflect to.
Yes, yeah, okay, alright.
But show the plan as far as where your two proposed addresses are, so on and so forth, so they know what you're. They need to show, if you're showing a road come out where the primary house was, or they're on that property.
Yeah, that's where I'm gonna show.
Right, I'm saying, show on the plans, that this is your proposed plan.
A conceptual plan.
Conceptual plan, showing, and they'll go from there.
Yeah, and the other neighbors are.
Look at sight lines, and they can look at, just a little bit of everything.
Yeah, and then Ronald and Joey Parent, who's in, they're at, at seventy-eight Cottage Lane, I've got to know them over the last year, and they have no issues with me putting a road through, and
Okay.
They may wanna buy one of the units if we get it approved, for the manufacturing park.
But I would just start at the end, as far as just get, get us something, even if it's a primary plan.
Sure.
You gotta start somewhere, because.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll get my, they never looked to saying that, apple with through, you know.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Start with something, so.
Yeah, and Paul Grazewitz will be doing the engineering, you know, Paul, you guys know you're Paul.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, yeah, okay.
They're working in, with, with, with him, but I, myself, I mean, unless anybody wants to give me a directive.
I think that's gonna, we need something just.
It's gonna be an independent traffic study, it's, you're not gonna hire him, I'm not gonna hire him, I mean, that's why we leave third party, so.
Yeah, no, I get it.
It's a blank slate, they're looking at it as, they don't care if it's in Texas, or it's doubled it.
Yeah, I get it.
Doesn't work.
Mm-hmm.
They'll do all the studies, so I'm not sure as far as cost wise, but Whitman and Bingham will submit a proposal, you pony up for that through planning.
Yes, that's fine.
For everything.
Sure.
And we'll start there.
Alright, well, thank, that's all I really needed to do, I just wanna let you know that, that we'll have that through Rose, so there's.
Yeah, so that way, we just know what works with them.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Sounds good.
Start all over.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, those traffic studies in the street, input, is there, they come around, is book, actually book at it, or they just?
Oh, they'll do whatever, they'll do, they'll put traffic counters out at the street, I mean, they'll, yeah, they.
That's what I mean, do they even know what that bottom of the street looks like?
They do all, and they'll have a better map than the state, though, when they're done. They, they're very, very thorough with that, because traffic says not just done for a small road in Temple, that's done for Mass Highway, too.
Well, I didn't know, they just looked at a map from Boston, and go, okay.
You see these guys up, all those little, they're empty rubber holes across the road, traffic counts, clippers, they'll have them probably on your, on your street, yellow street. Two-way, tells you what time the traffic flows are, how many cars a day, which way they're going, it's pretty involved.
Did you say before, they can't exit onto a private road? One of the exits, entrances or exits can't enter onto a private road.
Oh, what private road?
Stephen's what?
Oh, he's gonna have to, um. You can't actually, because it's no different, you have right here. I mean, he can still build a road off of a road, as long as, as long as he just puts up the bond for the, for the curb cut, whatever, but that's actually all part of that, I think that, I, if I remember, I think that was all part of the Rachel's other, just unfinished one of it, I think. I don't know, I don't have a plan in front of me, Gary. So what we got here? Steve Smith? Steve present?
No.
Okay.
No representation, see.
Fine. Paper check out? He's just combining two lots. And making it one.
Correct.
The billable lot, thanks, Gary. Lot A and lot B are gonna be one block, that's where I got from Maury, so it's a, it was one of, it was one of the developments off of, is it something? Ground was wrong, sorry. Charlie, you know something about this?
Yeah, I'm recusing myself.
But you know something about, as far as, just after your dad's.
It's after.
Okay, there was some lots that was above and like it?
Yeah.
Okay, and it was, just ended up being, the guy bought, correct or wrong, he, he obtained ownership of the land on the side, because it was just all by that.
Right.
So he bought this for, for protection.
They tried, exactly, they tried to have two lots there, that one was not built.
So he's just including the conservation one point five one seven acres, with this already consisting two point six four four acres. So it'll make it three point seven six one acres. So I go down the checklist.
So what, man, just.
Charlie, can you just read the checklist, and John, you got it?
No, I don't have a Charlie.
Charlie, you take over that?
I do not.
Charlie, you read the, read the instructions there, and we'll stake all the veterans for a walk, okay? All the veterans for a walk, will you?
Okay.
Read that list.
Happy to. Four copies of plans.
Yeah.
Uh, identification of plan by name of owner of record and location.
Yep.
Statement of approval, under subdivision control law, not required. Zoning classification and location of any zoning district boundaries.
Identification with a, new reference of this area, two acres.
In the case.
Oh, sorry, too, yeah, okay, yeah.
In the case of creation of new lot, that there, the remaining land area.
Yeah.
Yep, notice any decisions by Z B A. Uh, names of the, any abutters?
Yeah, yeah.
Distance to nearest permanent monument.
Yeah.
Pick one. Location of all existing buildings.
Yeah.
Location of any ease or way.
Yeah, the, the, yeah.
Got four copies of Form A, four copies of A and R. Script of lots.
I have one question, when it says, all buildings shown the plan, how do we know if the buildings are there or not?
We have, there is. I thought of that, actually, same exact time, but the one that's, the one that, there is one illustrated on.
Yeah, okay, anyways, but we done?
All lots by qualified way, yes, all lots have adequate, yes, mild access, all lots have adequate acreage.
Just really just backland, but, okay, there is a little bit of front, not much, but, okay.
That's it.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the plan as submitted.
I have a quick question.
Oh, Dennis, sorry. You want? Let's get the motion on the floor first, and we'll do the questions, okay? I mean, motion's up, so, second, you second it, Joe? I, so, yes, second, okay, suspension.
We have one lot that has a conservation restriction on it.
Yeah.
And another lot without one, what's the impact on the conservation restriction?
It goes out the window.
You can't just, you can't just.
Restriction doesn't.
Can't just discard a conservation restriction.
It doesn't, it doesn't go away, the land hasn't changed, he's just, the guy just bought, it was extra lot on the side of itself.
Just the boundary changes.
Just the boundary changes, he makes it all part of his lot, that's all.
Put to the conservation restriction.
Yeah, yeah, basically, they render it unbuildable.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not buildable still, so we pump it out, right, pump it out. With that being said. Bone favor? I, I.
I abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, sign away, we live by law?
We have a mile left?
Yep, got it.
Got it. Alright, we'll, before we're gonna sign.
So there's four paper copies.
Oh, that's you, right, try to go.
Mr. Brown.
Oh, the committee commission. So that was it, this? Yeah.
So you don't sign the letter?
I can't see anything, so.
Which like, to Kirk.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, John?
Can't see, John either.
What am I signing?
This is a determination.
We're gonna say approved.
Planning for a, then.
Alright, that's fine, I can. Yeah.
I'm not going to.
Five, ten.
But I actually think I can sign.
Yeah, you can sign.
I can sign, I just don't, but yeah.
Thank you.
But yeah, I'd rather not.
Or you sign another.
So, yeah, we all, start, start with Dennis, are you afraid of, you gotta play an answer? Yeah, usually, we start with Dennis. Yeah, usually we start with Dennis, and we're, Dennis, make sure you write the right year. Oh, I need to, before the meeting's over, I suppose to just, just, uh, say it in the meeting, but I, I filled out a form for. What could be the, um. The appearance of a conflict.
Yes.
Because reds. Like I said, I filed, I signed it with Apex, and I was. You guys can't be signing upside down, as long as a mile is fine. It doesn't really matter, but usually you're doing the same sequence. I found it stolen, it's always okay. Just remember that. Okay, this is the holy grail. So call the ethics commission. Yeah, it's all four. The only four anyways, because seven and four, right?
I got it. There was so much paperwork, I didn't want it like.
So we got, update these. Um, those stay. It's got Frank Dennis's, mine, yours.
Yeah, so the papers have that four, right? Next on the agenda is updated forms and fees for review and approval. You know, residents come into the office, and they ask for certain paperwork, and it's kind of dated. So we wanted to put this in front of you guys.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you so much. Um, so the package that I just gave, the first one says site plan review procedure for applicants, so this is what we would hand to residents. Um, number three says a hand drawn sketch. Do you as a board feel that's appropriate?
Yeah, it's actually fine to get, like, an applicant in, so we get an idea of what they want to do.
Okay.
Because, you know, site plan review could just be, I'm just, I'm building, you know, a rectangle building. You don't need to engineer a plan, it's seven thousand dollars later, just give us an idea, and then, then maybe we can say, we need something more detailed, because of drainage calc's. And where it is. But I think it's acceptable for, um.
Do you like that verbiage?
Well, it says pre-application, so I would say that a pre-application, it's sufficient.
Okay.
What if, I mean, we can always say a hand drawn sketch or design plans.
No, no, so it's, it's pre-application.
No, I got you.
Before, before a formal submitted.
Right, yeah, yeah.
As you, uh, Charlie, under number four, application requirements, it says site plan review applications, and that's all the normal stuff.
Gotcha, yep. It's just to get their feet wet, to see what. Sorry.
Okay, thank you for that.
Excuse me, is it?
The second one is site plan approval application, this also goes out for residents. In the upper right-hand corner, you see something highlighted, it says site plan number. Upper right-hand corner, it says site plan number.
Yeah.
Um, we file them in office by the road that they're on.
Yes, you do.
Pleasure that Lori and I are unaware of, that there were site plan numbers attached to things.
Well, on a, say, on a commercial, so you're gonna go like a strip mall, something like that, the, the design engineer. Will put this, this specific site plan, um, number for numerical, for like their own records.
Okay, so it's an external number?
Yeah, so I, you really don't need it, because you always reflect to the plan itself, you know what I mean, for, you know. Joe's Way or something like that, but you know, Joe's Shopping Mall, whatever. So you don't.
Okay to remove?
Yeah, yeah. You guys agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the next one says planning board fee schedule and timeframe decision, this is another piece of paper that goes out to residents. If you guys need more time looking at this, and we want to discuss this at the next meeting, that's fine, but we need to make sure these fees are correct.
Well, I think in the, but the books.
The, the form that I found, this said twenty fourteen.
You know.
So I just didn't.
Yeah, the fees themselves, because, because it just goes into the general fund.
Yeah.
And the applicants have to pay, you know, for their own engineer, a peer review engineer. So we've actually used to have these things where they were stupid-eyed, and then we realized that we were just, it was actually counterproductive to get business to come into town. So you should at least make it affordable for them to come in and discuss and get something on the ground.
And I feel.
That's my opinion anyways.
So, the ones that we see most often are obviously A, the A and Rs, you know, and then the site plans. Um, so that leads me to my last question, if you guys look at the last one, it says site plan review submission checklist, this is what we use internally. And it's also on this fee schedule. Can somebody explain to?
Where is that?
What this ten cents of, what is?
Oh, oh, okay.
Can somebody explain this?
Alright, uh, we used to, I didn't get away with that. The, um.
Ten cents a square foot on usable, leasable space of the.
So the excellent, disturbed with that.
Use dollars and squared feet, it's a.
So how, how is that calculated?
By square footage, so just like you say, like, just use an example for, not, we're Patriots, as Tony has some space next door, I think it's fifteen hundred square feet. That, that would be a hundred fifty dollar fee based upon that, so somebody had a hundred thousand square foot.
A hundred thousand, huge, yeah.
A hundred thousand square foot, say warehouse, something like that. Um, you go a hundred thousand times ten cents. And the, the, the number would usually come from, like, an industry standard, twenty-five or seventy-five or a hundred and ten dollars a square foot to build a building. It's not like what they're actually spending.
It's just, we're just, we're assessing the fee.
So if I get, is it on the land?
No, just. It says right on.
On the space.
That's it, it's a square foot unusable, leaseable space of the facility, excluding disturbed land and parking spaces.
Plus the hundred dollar fee for the planning.
Yeah, yeah.
As dictated on the.
Right.
Schedule.
It just.
If he was to build a garage, that was two thousand square feet, be two hundred bucks plus.
Right. But again, if it's something like a large mall where it's a hundred thousand square feet, now it's, you know, there's a little bit more work to do, so they can, yeah.
I'm good with all that, just, we wanted to have those forms in front of you, though, that's what's going out to the residents.
Always fires, we may come in for.
Yes.
Yeah, that works.
Thank you.
I've been absent for four months.
No, we, we didn't even notice.
I make a motion that we develop this.
I didn't know if the meeting was happening tonight or not, I'm sorry, I'm a, I'm a resident, I called it plain. Oh. And I'm here to see what's going on.
So we did that a long, long time ago, um, but there really isn't anything going on, he asked to submit. Um, the formal application. Yeah, so there's really nothing that he submitted yet, he's still looking to do some development over there, but there's really nothing official that he submitted, so.
No kidding. So I know next order was the house is still in probate, and he told me that on the other side, the rumory house has. And on the other side, the state owned property, and he said they haven't gone back to him, because he was trying to buy a piece of our land.
I think he ended up buying a piece of property, uh, from an estate.
Was it the rumory estate next door?
I mean, you can go back and look at this film, I don't want to say, because I really don't remember, but this.
I'm sorry, has the meeting adjourned?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
You can go back, does it sound like it?
Uh, this is recorded, and we posted on the town website, I would go back to this in twenty, I don't remember. Oh, okay, so he was here tonight.
He was.
Uh, Danny Gargan said he purchased seventy-two Cottage Lane from a Matt Leclerc.
Well, and Matt's the executor.
Of the estate.
Yeah, because the last time he came up to talk to me, he said it was still in probate, and.
Yeah, I think if you listen to the, the YouTube, uh, recording, when, when did it get put on the town website?
It is actually streaming right now.
So when is there a copy of it? So if you go home and look at the town, you can hear everything that was said, but there really isn't anything profitable yet.
Okay, awesome.
To come up with.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Alright, have a good night, everyone, good, good night, bye bye.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as second. Any comments, questions, follow us in favor? I have it.
Okay, one more thing.
There's more?
No, yeah. Last thing, um, in.
Oh, those, that looks like a lot more there.
In development services, um, I need binders for every board that is serviced. These are simply just for you, you don't need to do anything with them, other than there is. There's open meeting line there, there are bylaws in there, um, it is simply, as a, you can put things in there. If you want to hold on to them.
Thank you.
You're very.
We truly appreciate.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. I really can't see them.
Nothing, I have nothing else, if you guys have anything else.
Seeing none, I, I make, I have, I make a motion, I do, I hear a motion to adjourn, adjourn.